Good evening. Notice of the Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article V, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, March 6, 2018, at 5:30 PM and at 6:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with the executive sessions. Executive Session A, Attorney Consultation pursuant to Section 551.071A, Texas Government Code, to provide legal advice and counsel in connection with pending litigation styled and numbered John Williamson versus the City of Brownsville, case number 17-CV-00207, SD Texas, Brownsville Division, and related legal matters. Executive Session B, Consultation with Attorney pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, regarding a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Next, we have Executive Session C, Discussion pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate the exchange lease and value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect of the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person.
Mayor, I move you going to Executive Session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Begin the regular meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas land, and with allegiance to the Constitution, Texas is one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings that we have living in the city of Brownsville. Lord, tonight, we especially thank you for our right to vote, and we ask you to lead and guide the voters in this last hour of voting. And tonight, we especially ask you to lead and guide our elections administrator, Remy Garza, and every election worker to give us a clean, accurate count of the vote. We also ask you to bless our mayor here tonight, and every commissioner, every presenter, for the best for the city of Brownsville, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Action on item discussed in Executive Session? Action Executive A, consideration and appropriate action to ratify and approve a settlement agreement for the resolution of the lawsuit styled and numbered John Williamson versus the City of Brownsville, case number 17-CV-00207.
Mayor, I move that council continue as advising Executive Session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Next, we have the mayor's activity update.
Okay, I'll make it brief. I want to express my sincerest appreciation for everybody, for Char Days, for all the people who were involved, all the law enforcement, all the cleanup, all the different organizations. I had a chance to visit with Mr. Amigo Pedrito, who was wonderful to our people. So, to all of you, my sincerest thank yous to the commission, and my shout-out goes to Ricardo, because I love his energy during Char Days. He does a great job, so thank you. The second thing I'd like to say is that we won't have a meeting before spring break, so I wish everybody a safe spring break. Enjoy. Be careful taking care of our neighbors, and every one of us is a neighbor to someone. And the last thing, even though we'll have one more meeting before this happens, God willing, is that we'll have a bi-national run, March 24th, between Brownsville, and we'll end up going to Matamoros. It will be a 5K on either side, and you can walk it, and as I told people, it's really not a race, it's a run. It's a run to enjoy the sights. There are some beautiful buildings out there, University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. You'll see our downtown area that has a lot of great improvements. You'll go across to Matamoros, God willing, and you'll see a consulate office where they've spent about $180 million. It's not quite complete, but it's a beautiful building. The city of Matamoros with Mayor Chuchin has done an excellent job, along with the previous mayors, to work on the downtown area. There's a corridor. I happen to go over there and visit with them, and so I hope everybody signs up. I know that registration is already taking place, and I understand there's also another race on the same day, so either one, whatever suits you. We encourage everybody to run. The Ocelot Run that was done this past weekend was a great success, so being healthy is not a bad thing. That's my report.
Next, we have Commissioner's Activity Update.
I just have a quick note to share with the public. So hurricane season starts in June, but as you all know, we usually have heavy rain and quick downpours in the springtime, and the city has started dredging our canals, because you know, over the winter and with a lot of the wind, a lot of debris tends to build up in them, but I've noticed that in District 2, that we have already started dredging our canals and waterways. But I would ask that everybody pay extra close attention. When you throw something out, make sure the lid is completely down, and just really, really, really please bear in mind that anything that you see floating around your front yard, anything you see floating in the street, pick it up and take care of it, because it takes very little to clog the drains in your neighborhoods and on our streets, and then we have a very big problem. Because plastic, let me tell you, nothing is getting through that. So it will back up, it will back into your home, it will back up and flood your car, and I just ask that with the spring downpours that we're having, be extra careful and extra observant, even your neighbors. If you see them blowing leaves into the drainage, into the gutters, kind of tell them, hey, when it rains, our houses are gonna flood. So with that in mind, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number four?
Next, we have Presentations. We have Employee of the Month, Thomas P. Gonzalez, Golf and Park Superintendent.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. We'd like to present Thomas Gonzalez. He works in our Brownsville Golf Center. He is our Parks and Golf Superintendent. He has been with the city for 18 years, making this September, he'll be here with 19. He started September 1999 as a Maintenance Worker 1, and then in June 2000, he became a Maintenance Supervisor, and in June 2015, he became the Interim Golf and Park Superintendent, and then effective permanently in July 2016, he was promoted to the Parks and Golf Superintendent position. Mr. Gonzalez educates and supports the development of his employees and coworkers by working together as a team and sharing his knowledge with others in the department. He works actively and positively with other golf course management as well. He has a limited crew to keep up over 100 acres, which he keeps very pristine, and maintains the turf that brings many winter Texans to live and visit and spend their tourist dollars here. Mr. Gonzalez works before the sun rises, and even recently, in the sleet, in the snow, in the heat, to ensure that that turf is playable. He took up the challenge of reviving the greens when they were nearly dead, back in 2015, to its pristine standard now that we're getting a lot of acclamation for. And many turf professionals at the time didn't think that it could be done, and were saying that we need to dig in our pockets and pay for new turf, but he was able to bring it back. So he preserved that with his dedication, knowledge, and skill. And as Employee of the Month, Mr. Gonzalez receives a wristwatch. I think it's Mr. -- there you go. An engraved plaque. And of course, the ever coveted pin. He's also eligible to be selected as Employee of the Year. He'll be featured on TV and city website, and then featured in our banquet for December 2015 if awarded so.
Very good.
Thank you to the City of Brownsville and my director, and I hope I can serve the city for many, many more years.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next, we have Consent Agenda Items A and B.
So move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public hearings. Public hearing number five, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 2018-1640, to authorize the city manager to abandon and close a 16-foot alley adjacent to lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 1, Los Ebanos Edition.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This alley is located adjacent to Palm Boulevard on Sunset Drive. It's mainly used by the residents accessing the apartment complex in the area and not by the general public. We placed a notice in the newspaper, and we did not receive any comments. We're gonna retain a utilitiesment to accommodate existing utilities, and our department recommends approval to abandon the alley.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody here on this issue? I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Public hearing number six, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 2018-1641, to authorize the city manager to abandon and close a portion of Joanne Lane Right Away adjacent to Lot 23, La Lomita subdivision.
This right away is located in the general area of 281 and Garden Park Elementary School. This is dead end and improved right away. The Engineering Department does not need the right away, and we will also retain a utilitiesment for existing utilities. We recommend approval.
Again, public hearing. Anybody here on that issue or this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have Public Hearing Number Seven, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 2018-1603-A, to amend Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 4, Section 2-367, regarding the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee member of terms.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Commission. I'm here today to bring this item forward. In 2015, we adopted Ordinance Number 2015-1603 to create the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We have been active for two years now, and we are close to needing reappointments, but the ordinance needs to be amended so that we can stagger the terms. So we're presenting this amendment to change two-year terms so that we have three-year terms that are staggered.
Anyone here on this issue, public hearing? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Public Hearing Number Eight, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 235-2017-081-S, to allow a wireless communication facility, a general retail 4C use, in general retail H, 4CH, for lots 4, 5, and 6 of Block 46A, Stillman Extension Brownsville, located near the corner of West Elizabeth Street and West Third Street.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This first case is for a specific use permit to allow a wireless communication facility, which is commonly known as a cell tower, at Sam Stadium. Here's the zoning map. You can see the surrounding area is mostly general retail 4C, although to the north, there is dwelling use, as well to the south, there is some light industrial use, as well as apartments. This is part of the town corridor and downtown node in our future land use plan. The town corridor is primarily residential, with small clusters of commercial land uses at regularly spaced intervals. Residential uses should have a density of three dwelling units per acre. The downtown node is primarily commercial, but residential, community facilities, and institutional uses are also present. No industrial uses should be allowed in this node. Residential uses should have an average density of 21 dwelling units per acre. Here is an aerial map. You can see the portion where it's proposed, at Sam Stadium. To the north, there are single-family dwellings. They're also present to the west and to the south. Other commercial businesses to the north, east, south, and to the west. There are also apartments to the west and civic institutions to the south. Here is the 200-foot radius map. This is the site plan for the unit. It's proposed to -- here, you can see this portion as well, the elevation. It's proposed to be a total of 130 feet, including the lightning rod. It can accommodate up to three different carriers. Presently, there will only be one. There were 20 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports a specific use permit to allow a wireless communication facility in general retail H, 4CH. Specific use permits must comply with Chapter 338 Telecommunication, which regulates this type of development, as well as city codes and regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
There was 20 mailouts and no written opposition? Is that?
That is correct. Nobody came to the Planning and Zoning Commission to speak on it either, against it rather.
So it's directly on the property of Sam Stadium, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue? Yes, sir, would you please come to the -- Yes, sir, would you mind identifying yourself?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Troy Williams. I'm with branch communications. We're proposing 125-foot tower with a 5-foot lightning rod. It's on the -- on that platter you saw, it's technically on the south half of that square. And it's in a triangle-shaped area in the southwest part of the stadium. The access, the address they've assigned to it is 3 Boulevard of Champions, which is the main entrance to the stadium, comes down, stadium's number one, the maintenance facility's number two, and this would be number three. The site will be fenced with an 8-foot wood fence and landscape per code, but we're asking permission to access it from the alley, so we don't come through the stadium, around the maintenance facility, and down the property line. It is allowable use on the facility. The other good thing about it is you already have four monopole structures on the property for the lights. This would blend in and conform to that use. The -- this area is an underserved area of Brownsville. The towers that are around it, 6 and 1/2, 7 tenths of a mile or more, are -- already have multiple carries on them and have left a gap in this coverage, and I -- did they get -- I have propagation maps. Did they not get that in there?
Oh, may I approach?
Sure.
You're gonna have a lot of happy parents that can now livestream from Sam Stadium.
Thank you.
On this particular -- that's a coverage plot, and that plot, red is good and excellent. It means you have in-building coverage, 4G wireless, and tele -- you know, it's not just cell phones anymore. It's data, it's Wi-Fi, it's internet, and that's also done without any activity going on at Sam's Memorial Field, with all the soccer games and the football and everything else. That red area gets smaller, and the yellow area gets bigger, which is -- which is limited outdoor coverage, and the green is weak signal to no coverage whatsoever, which this site will fill in a gap, not just for T-Mobile, who's the first carrier going on it, but multiple carriers that we've already talked to that have been trying to fill this void. Wireless, it'll also be tied into the E911 system for emergencies, and first responders use wireless a lot too in emergencies and disasters, hurricanes and things. We did try to co-locate. They're already on all the towers around that are in the general area, on the 230-foot self-supporter that's owned by the police station, but they're pretty much loaded that tower with their equipment. They're actually adding more equipment on it, and there is no place to put anything on the ground, so we did try to do that. Wireless communication now is part of infrastructure, just like roads and bridges, you know, the best roads and the best bridges and the best coverage, you have better development. The area is -- in some areas, some parts of this is in need of some redevelopment. Well, the Brownsville Independent School District is in the process of adding some stadium improvements, in the planning stage, adding stadium improvements, but also they're proposing to add one of the largest scoreboards in Texas, maybe the country for this type of venue. The video data or digital scoreboard is like 44 feet by 55 feet, and that's just the picture. And I might add, it's also operated via wirelessly. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Public Hearing Number Nine, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 235-2018-001, to rezon from Light Retail G to CG to General Retail G 4CG for the east 90.5 feet of Lot Number 3, Block 21, Andrin Acres subdivision located at 4416 Boca Chica Boulevard.
This property is 0.4805 of an acre. It's currently zoned Light Retail 2C, and they're applying for General Retail 4C. The proposed use is a business plaza. So this is on Boca Chica, so up and down Boca Chica, you have different commercial uses, including medium retail, light retail, and general retail. There's also dwelling to the north and to the south of Boca Chica, as well as apartment use. This property is part of the town corridor in our future land use plan. The town corridor is primarily residential, with small clusters of commercial land uses at regularly spaced intervals. Residential uses should have an average density of three dwelling units per acre. Here's an aerial map. To the south is single-family dwellings. To the west are single-family dwellings and apartment complex. To the north are single-family dwellings, civic institutions, and commercial businesses. To the east is our single-family dwellings and commercial businesses. And as a point of reference, right here is Central Avenue Park. Here is the 200-foot radius map. There were 17 mailouts and zero written opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezon from Light Retail G to CG to General Retail G 4CG.
Again, is anyone here on this issue?
Move public hearing?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Hopefully, he brings something good, because I live like one block away.
Item number 10.
Next, we have Public Hearing Number 10, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 235-2018-004-CO, to rezon from General Retail G 4CG to Medium Commercial G 6CG-CO for lots 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, 777 Commercial subdivision located at 7077 North Expressway 77, Olmito, Texas.
This property is 3.92 acres. The proposed use is a business plaza. It's currently zoned General Retail 4CG, and they're asking for Medium Commercial 6CG. They have agreed to a conditional overlay, which I'll expand on in a minute. I have a slide for it. Up and down the expressway is General Retail 4C. Across the expressway, right here, is where the Old City Go-Kart, I believe is what it was called, the amusement park that had outdoor go-karting. This is part of the linkage corridor and sub-regional node in our future land use plan. The linkage corridor is primarily commercial and institutional land uses, and the sub-regional node is a balance of commercial and residential land uses, so that neither category is more prominent than the other. Residential uses should have an average density of nine dwelling units per acre. Here is an aerial map. To the north are single-family dwellings and commercial businesses. To the west are single-family dwellings and vacant land. To the south are single-family dwellings, vacant land, and commercial businesses. And to the east are single-family dwellings and commercial businesses. This is the 200-foot radius map. The conditional overlay will prohibit used car lots, flea markets, mini warehouses, which are self-serve storage facilities, outdoor sale or rental of commercial vehicles, penal correctional institutions, sexually oriented businesses, sale of mobile homes, or bulk apparel stores. It will also place the condition that public garages should be entirely contained within a soundproof building equipped with complete odor control and sanitation facilities. There are three mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from General Retail G 4CG to Medium Commercial G 6CG-CO.
Anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have Public Hearing Number 11, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 235-2018-005, to rezon from Dwelling ADA to Apartment AH for 24.393 acres consisting of two tracts, tract number one being 4.223 acres out of tract 20, Share 19, Espirito Santo Grant, Cameron County, Texas, tract number two being 20.170 acres out of tract 17 and 20, Share 19, Espirito Santo Grant, located at 341 Oak Street.
This property is 24.393 acres. Portions of it are zoned Dwelling A, and they're asking for Apartment H. This is brought forth by the Brownsville Housing Opportunity Corporation. To the north is Boca Chica Boulevard. Along Boca Chica, there are different commercial categories, including the brown, which is light industrial, 7C. And to the east and the west of that, along Boca Chica, are -- is general retail as well as light retail. To the east of the property is a single-family neighborhood. To the south is Tropical Gardens, which is currently apartment complex. And to the west is, again, light industrial as well as dwelling. It is part of the core central district in the town corridor in our future land use plan. The core central district is predominantly residential, with the mix of community facilities as well as commercial, institutional, and industrial land uses. Commercial uses should be neighborhood and service oriented, with some light industrial that is compatible with close proximity to residences. Residential uses should be primarily single-family dwellings and have an average density of three dwelling units per acre. The town corridor is primarily residential, with small clusters of commercial land uses at regularly spaced intervals. The town corridor is primarily residential with small clusters of commercial land uses. Residential uses should have a density of three dwelling units per acre and should primarily consist of single-family dwellings. Here's aerial. To the north are single-family dwellings as well as commercial businesses along Boca Chica. To the west are apartments, as well as civic institutions and commercial businesses. South are single-family dwellings. To the east are single-family dwellings and a few commercial businesses. Here is the 200-foot radius map. There were 65 mailouts and zero written opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling A to apartment H.
Anyone here on this issue? Hello, Carla.
Hi. Hi, yes. All that we know, my name is Carla Mancha, and I'm the CEO for the Housing Authority of C.A. Brownsville and also for the Brownsville Housing Opportunity Corporation. On behalf of HACB and BHOC, I would like to thank you for your support. On behalf of the board as well, thank you for your support. To our tax credit application that is known as Poincetta Gardens at Boca Chica, this application was submitted to the state last week, and in the application, we did provide evidence that we were requesting a zoning change for this property. This property is owned by the Brownsville Housing Opportunity Corporation. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted favorably on the item last Thursday, and today I come before you to ask that you also consider and support for the zoning change in order for BHOC to proceed with the development of this property. This is a much-needed project for our community, for it will address the affordable housing needs that we currently face. As of today, the Housing Authority has over 3,600 families on the wait list. In addition, this project is of utmost importance for the city of Brownsville. It has been identified as the project that is most contributing towards the Brownsville approved Neighborhood Revalidation Strategy Area Plan, and it's also identified in the HACB Choice Neighborhood Plan. This will be a $25 million investment to the community. The initial development of this property will be the construction of 150 units, which will be composed of one, two, and three-bedroom units. With regards to flooding concerns, we have and will always... and will continue to work with our expert engineers to assure that this topic and concern is vetted thoroughly and completely for proper drainage and water management as it has been done for all HACB and BHOC developments. And we will not construct anything that will cause trouble for our families nor for our neighbors. It is HACB's mission to build quality, affordable housing. We approach development holistically, where we provide families with the access to resources that will enable them to reach self-sufficiency and that will facilitate the creation of sustainable communities. Housing, people, and communities are the three main goals of HACB as they are identified in HACB Strategic Plan for 2020. And I'd like to also ask Mr. Martinez to come up.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I am Henry Martinez. I live in that Bonner subdivision, and in speaking with this young lady, Ms. Mancha, I am very pleased with what's going on, because we live there and we've had... we used to have a lot of problems. And with what she is addressing and what her team is doing, I mean, it can only be good for our people there in our community. We have a lot of retired people, including myself, and with your support in helping this young lady, I mean, it'll be good for the rest of the people there in the neighborhood. And I represent myself, because I live there. And last time that we spoke with the Planning and Rezon... and Zoning Commission, I brought some of those concerns, and she's addressed some of these, and hopefully, everything will be great. So with your support and with what she's doing and her team, it can be only good... beneficial for the people in our community.
I like the color of your hair.
Because we're both Martinez.
Martinez. Ta bueno primo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carla, if it's not too much, I was coming to you, and then I found out that you already had this in the works. Within your plat, you... and you touched on it, that you have... that you're... that you've provided for adequate water retention.
Yes.
Would there be a possibility of us possibly, with engineering and all of us sitting down, and maybe us even contributing in the... in the form of a park?
Okay.
And I'll... and I'll tell you where I'm headed with this. I have a... when I began here in 2003, the state took Boca Chica Boulevard down 18 inches. And you'll remember that back then, we didn't flood. When they took down those 18 inches, we started to flood. Walmart alleviated a lot of the problem on the other side of the road, but on this side, we have a huge problem, including your offices and including your facilities. Would you be willing to sit down at least and have a conversation so that we could probably maybe... I know that it... that it does probably have some... something there to provide a park for the kids. If we could partner up, possibly do what we've done in other parts of the city with the tension pond, but at the same time, provide a park, a full-time park for your residents, for the... you know, the residents of the facility, but at the same time, have it serve as water... for water retention, so we can alleviate some of that water. We used to have a major problem at Falk, and that thing used to cover the field and all the facilities. When we found the tree that had grown sideways inside the line, we don't have water there. The water goes within... I mean, I'm saying within six hours, the water's gone. So there's no... really no damage to the structures that are in there. But if we could possibly sit down and work with each other?
Most definitely.
I think that, you know, that would be an alleviation to a huge problem that we've had for a very long time.
Yes, most... most definitely. And I would invite as well our neighbors to also provide input on how they would like for the park to look, because that would be a part for the community. So most definitely, I can go ahead and be in touch with you through Michael, through Mr. Lopez, and we can go ahead and share with you what we've done so far and then build on that.
Good.
And I'd like to... I'd like to also mention, as I've shared with Mr. Martinez right before the meeting, as you all... as you all are aware, we submitted the tax credit application and the log, the TDHCA log came out this afternoon, and... and we are in the money for the at-risk set aside for this... for this project. So we still have some ways to go, but it... everything looks fairly positive, and it means a great deal to us that Mr. Martinez is here, standing next to us, next to me, in support of it. Communication is key to working together and united. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
We lost 18 to 24 inches on Bonner Street. So I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else here on this issue?
Close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both of them carry.
Public hearing number 12. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-006 to allow a type A home-assisted living facility, a general retail 4C... 4C use in dwelling G, DG for lot 1, block 1, Mario Moreno subdivision, a subdivision to the city of Brownsville located at 3275 Old Port Isabel Road.
This property is 0.8 acres. They're applying for a specific use permit to allow a type A home-assisted living facility, which requires general retail in dwelling G. This property fronts Old Port Isabel Road. Surrounding it is mostly dwelling, although to... immediately to the south is a specific use permit for professional office, as well as down Old Port Isabel Road, there is light retail as well as apartment and more professional office. This property is part of the Transition Central District and Town Corridor in our future land use plan. The Transition Central District is comprised of mostly residential land with a mix of other uses. The town corridor is primarily residential with small clusters of commercial land uses at regularly spaced intervals. Here's an aerial. To the north are single-family dwellings as well as a few commercial businesses. To the west are single-family dwellings and vacant land. To the south is single-family dwellings and vacant land, and to the east are single-family dwellings, civic institutions, and county facilities, including Cascade Park. Here is the 200-foot radius map. And here is the specific use... the site plan. It is hard to see, so we split it into two. So you can see this is the rear of the property, and this is the fronting. There were 21 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports a specific use permit to allow a type A home-assisted living facility in dwelling G. Specific use permits must comply with city codes and regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
Anyone here on this particular issue?
Were there sidewalks on that?
There is a swell in the way. They will... in this note, it says a variance will be requested for a sidewalk due to a ditch on the property. If the variance is not granted, they will install a sidewalk.
Okay.
Would close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is a public comment period. We did not receive any public comments for this.
Thank you.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number 14. Consideration action for the city of Brownsville to enter into contract with Dr. John Wells as the Brownsville Fire Department Medical Director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioner. We're requesting approval for a contract with Dr. John Wells to serve as our medical director. As you know, we provide both emergency and non-emergency services to the citizens of Brownsville and surrounding areas designated by the Emergency Service District, and we're required to have a medical director appointed. The Texas Medical Board and Texas Department of State Health Services help set the standards and regulations for a EMS medical director, and upon appointment, our medical director has two years to complete those requirements. Dr. Wells has served for four months on a... on a temporary basis for us, and he's completed those two-year requirements already within three months. Some of the other things we look for in a medical director as Brownsville Fire Department, we kind of took it above and beyond and set our own standards, because we look for best practices of EMS. And what we found through asking other cities and other agencies is there... if you've seen one EMS service, you've seen only one EMS services. Everybody's unique in EMS. Some of the things we look for is medical leadership, agency, medical oversight, medical-related education training, coordination of medical-related standard operating procedures and protocols, medical-related emergency preparedness and disaster care, medical-related quality improvement, provider health and safety measures, implementation of medical-related and evidence-based best practices, research activities related to efficiency of auto-hospital patient care practices and patient outcomes. And we feel Dr. Wells has met all of those best practices. And plus to that, the advantages we have with Dr. Wells is serving... him serving as the medical director for Health Department. We feel the interoperability between the Fire Department and EMS is going to be a benefit to increase efficiency in handling some of the health issues affecting the citizens, such as Azika, the diabetes and flu, and helping keep track of those... some of those patients, as well as promoting health and wellness initiatives that can be combined through the bidirectional communication with Dr. Wells, what he brings to the table. Dr. Wells brings decades of medical experience. He's served previously in the 80s as our medical director for EMS, taking our service from a basic life support service to a what it is today and helps set those protocols. So in that, we feel that he's a best fit for our service and requesting approval of the contract.
Thank you, Chief.
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number 15.
Next, we have action item number 15. Consideration action pursuant to Section 42-132 of the City of Brownsville Code of Ordinances regarding the appeal of intercity ambulance from the denial of a license for ambulance or transport service.
Mayor and Commissioners, pursuant to the Code of Ordinances allows the public health director and city manager to see the need for additional services. At this time, we have other items that we would like to address first before we move on this, so I'd request to continue the denial of this appeal.
So is it a motion to continue to deny?
No, it's a motion to deny the appeal.
Motion to deny.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Would adjourn?
Second.
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for being here.